Let me start over. It's now 6:00 PM and I will call the special called mayor and council meeting for the city of Carrollton to order. So if y'all all stand with me and we'll have our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if y'all will remain standing and Councilman Waters, would you do the honors please of our invocation? Amen. Thank you. Okay, at this time, do we have any citizens comments, Mr. Triplet? Okay, so we have no citizen comments. You have the minutes from August meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those? I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August meetings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, next on the agenda is our mayor and council meeting and I usually start to my left and today I'll start from my right with Councilman Waters. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm excited about seeing all the new construction that's going on in our downtown corridor. There's several houses being built on West Chandler Street, seeing new houses going up on Rudy Street as well, and some on Reece Street, all very near our downtown area. And I'm just excited to see that kind of construction going on in our downtown corridor. I'm also excited about the fact that our Lake Shore Park renovation has been kicked off. A lot of infrastructure, real boring stuff's going on right now, but hopefully in the very near future we'll see some pavilions going up and a playground being built and some other things out there improved. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Uglum?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm excited about Taste of Carrollton this week and hope we have a huge crowd and restaurants all do well and we have a fun, safe night on Thursday night. That's it.
That's it, okay. Well, I want to first thank everybody for being here and especially our employees for the great job that they do. And I know Friday, some of us were privileged to attend the law enforcement appreciation meeting that they had out at the park where they have erected a beautiful monument out there for our law enforcement and not just law enforcement, but all of our first responders, our police, our firemen, our deputies, sheriffs and for 911. And it's beautiful and if you haven't been out there to see it, you need to. And we were so excited that Rob Holloway got to be there. And they honored each group of people that participated. Well, I don't know if you want to call it participated or not, maybe a better word is responded to the April 12th tragedy that we had here. And I'm so proud that all of them were able to be there. But, you know, when we think about first responders, sometimes we don't think about our 911 operators. And they said that one of the 911 operator's husband was being shot at while she was trying to keep her calls going and responding. And, you know, to me, that is just one of the most horrible things that I could think of going through in any kind of situation to know that, you know, you're trying to carry on your duties and knowing that your spouse is out there being shot at. And I just commend her for, and they did, for doing a great job and able to carry on her duties as those calls were coming in and people were trying to cover areas and respond. And that just, it's so, so glad, I am so glad that we have those, all of those people here in our community because it makes it a lot safer. And also, I think we can all lay down and go to sleep at night knowing that we're well protected from every angle. Also, I want to remind everybody about COVID. As much as I would like for it to be gone, it's not. And so we're still asking you to wear your mask. And if you haven't been vaccinated, please give it some serious consideration. And the other thing is, and as by virtue of my office, I am on the Department of Health Board. And at our meeting last week, we have a huge increase in influenza. At, Dr. Larson said last week, I think Georgia was one of the highest cases in the United States right now. So, you know, we've got fall hay fever coming, we've got COVID, we've got the Delta virus and we've got now flu. So just keep that in mind and, you know, try to keep remembering to wash your hands and stay six feet apart. Because I know we kind of, as things got better, we kind of got a little slack. But anyway, I would appreciate that and I know everybody else would because if this gets so rampant again, you know, we don't want to, I don't think we can handle another economic impact that we had last time. So we don't want to have to shut things down. We want to keep our city vibrant and our businesses where patrons can go in and still visit the businesses. So anyway, and the other thing I have, I have one more thing. I think there's been some confusion on the recycling. Councilman Uglum and I were just discussing this. And Mr. Brooks, you can help me with this. They will pick up this week, if you have two containers out there, if you still put your recycles in the container, they will pick that container up and they will pick up your trash, but they both go in the same truck because right now we just don't have enough personnel because of COVID and sickness and the labor issue to run all of the trucks. So we are trying our best to run the necessity for health reasons and that is to get the garbage picked up. So, but after, so we just want to make sure, because I know some people had both cans or, yeah, out there and some people think that, you know, they won't get picked up. But we will pick them up, but they're going to go in the same truck. So, you know, if you want it recycled, you know, we have lots of areas that you can take your recycling to and your recycle charge is coming off your water bill during this time. So you're not being charged for recycling. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for items for consideration?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, our first item is annexation and rezoning request for 653 Blandingburg Road. The request is from Carroll County to ER1 Estate Residential, one acre lots. And the applicant is Ann Rayburn. And we'll let Mr. Brooks respond to that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a request to annex, it's a corner lot right there at the corner of Blandingburg and Stripland Chapel, to annex that into the city. They come before the planning commission, this previous month, it was voted 5-0 to allow the annexation request. There was no opposition. And the indication was that they thought that they were in the city when they bought the house due to the fact that they are part of Oak Mountain Park and, which is just right across the street. And, you know, they've always lived in the city and just want to continue to do so. Their kids go to city school system. They want to be able to have transportation provided. Not have to pay tuition to go to the school system and it just indicated that they enjoyed being a city resident and everything that comes along with being in the city of Carrollton. And the commission voted 5-0 to allow that annexation.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this application? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak either for or against the rezoning annexation request? Okay, do you want to speak to it or you're just? Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, do I have a motion to approve the annexation and rezoning request?
So moved.
Did I just ask for that?
I think, I think you did.
Jim made the motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Think I still have COVID brain. All right, so is there any other discussion of the annexation? All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Our second item on the agenda is a rezoning request at 415 Bradley Street. The request is C1 Central Business District to mixed use plan development and the applicant is James Fullford. Mr. Brooks, if you want to address that, please.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We, Mr. Fullford is requesting rezoning from Central Business to Light Industry right here at, on Menden, just right up the street here behind the Sign Depot and that facility that faces Bradley Street. He's asking to do that in order to either, he'll use it as either residential or possibly office space or a combination of both. It was approved 5-0 by the planning commission with some restrictions or some conditions. And the conditions were the existing chain link and barbed wire fence shall be removed from Menden Avenue right away. Any new fencing shall comply with the city of Carrollton UDO standards for fences. And then due to the very narrow right of way on Menden Avenue and the location of sidewalk along Bradley Street, staff, the planning commission recommend a waiver of the sidewalk requirement along Menden Avenue in the UDO for commercial developments. There is some renderings in your packet as well to kind of show you what you're planning on doing with that building. We feel like we've made good progress from the square all the way down to that point and it would be a welcomed cleanup of that area to kind of go along with everything else that we've had going on from the square down there.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Is there anybody here to speak to or against the project? I think we're just excited of the renovation. If we could just get the railroad to clean up theirs and I know
We're working on it.
Councilman Waters has worked on that several times trying to get them to clean theirs up. All right, now, do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request for 415 Bradley Street?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I've got a question.
Okay.
I noticed it's in a historic district. Is that right? I don't know exactly how that works about what has to be approved before it
I've already been in conversations with the Historic Society, so we know that's next on the agenda. I'm actually set up on their meeting the end of September. But I know they have to approve certain limitations like the exterior facades and all that. So I've already had that conversation and started that dialogue.
And they are on the agenda at the Historic Preservation Committee meeting next week.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think it was misstated. I think it's supposed to be a planned development, PD, correct?
It is.
You stated industrial.
Correct. No, we meet with the Historic Committee meets, Preservation Committee meets, it's either next week or it's either 21st or the 28th.
If they have changes, does that change the plan that you approved tonight?
It would
Go ahead.
It would change what the facade and what he looks, what the structure will eventually look like and what he would be able to do on the outside of that structure. It would change that.
Y'all, I haven't seen what y'all are looking at, so that's not what y'all are looking at tonight.
No. No.
Thank you. I was confused by this.
Me too. Can we hear a clarification from our city attorney on this?
What was the question?
Is this, are we okay to approve these changes before the Historic Commission does?
Yes, that's, it's a separate issue. That deals with exterior appearance and building new structures, but it doesn't affect your rezoning. They don't override the zoning power of the city council.
Just to clarify, it's, has it come before the planning commission? And there is a mistake there. Was it come before the planning commission? It was to go from Central Business District to mixed use plan development based on what he, what Mr. Fullford wants to do with the, with the building there. So that's what we're approving tonight and then the then the, the Historical Committee will then approve what the facade and that will look like on the exterior of the building. But either way, again, to you, it's going to look a whole lot better than what it looks right now.
Okay, now, the planning and zoning, they had certain stipulations, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. They had, the conditions they put on it was that the, the existing chain link fence and barbed wire fence that are out there had to be removed from the Menden Avenue right away. The, any new fencing put back up will comply with the, with our UDO standards for fences.
Okay, all right. So do I have a motion? Before we get too far, do I have a motion to grant the rezoning of that property with the stipulations that the Planning and Zoning Commission stated?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, Ms. April, Main Street Bylaws Amendment?
Hello.
Hey.
So, we obviously talked about this during the work session, but we sent to you guys revised bylaws for the Downtown Carrollton Main Street Board to realign the bylaws with the new structure under the Marketing Department and to address some just organizational and operational sort of changes that we're doing now with that board. Some of the major changes were in the board composition. We wanted to make sure that we have a certain type of board members for certain areas, like for example restaurants, retail, and that kind of thing, like allotted for certain positions, whereas before that was vague. We also changed the board member terms to where they're two-year consecutive terms versus three. And then the rest, like I said, was more just like operational, kind of clean up, cleaning up kind of the bylaws from before.
Okay. You all have a copy of the bylaws amendment, and we did discuss this in our work session. So do you have any further questions? Ms. Saunders?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the Main Street Bylaws Amendment as presented? Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, the amendment is approved. Okay, and the second, or the fourth item on our agenda is board appointments for Main Street. Okay, April?
So, we have two vacancies right now on our board, and our board voted to nominate Kelly Houck, who is the owner of Main Street Boutique. She has been the owner of that retailer since 2014, and she would serve in our retailer position and has expressed an interest to serve at, if you guys will it. And then our second nomination is for Kelsey. She is the manager at Gallery Row. She has been a great asset to our team and our board to help with a lot of different things. So those two names are who bubbled up from our board members.
Okay.
Their terms would be effective basically immediately upon appointment, and they would continue through September 30th of '23, and then they would be up for another term at that time.
Okay. So do I have a motion to appoint these two board members for the Downtown Main Street Advisory Board?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, hearing none, we will appoint Kelly, the owner of Main Street Boutique, and Kelsey, the manager for Gallery Row, to the terms that stated in the memorandum to the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate matters?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, for those people in the audience, we will go into executive session, and once we're finished with executive session, we will come back out and reconvene the meeting, if there's any business to be conducted based on what happens in the executive session. All right, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to reconvene into regular session?
No move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All of—
This could not be your throwing us off.
(laughing) All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, at this time I'd like to entertain a motion for the city to purchase 278.26 acres of property, more or less substantially undeveloped land on the bypass—north bypass of Carrollton, Stewart Street. It crosses the bypass on the east side and goes up for several acres there. And this is contingent upon a donation for the purchase of this property.
Mayor, you might mention that there are a condition, set of declarations, that limit the use of this property to passive recreation, as well as such active recreation not to exceed 30 acres as may be approved by the designee of the donor.
Okay, all right. So with Mr. Smith's addition, do I have a motion that incorporates all of this with the conditions that are put on the property, with the city purchasing the property with funds from a private donor, with city paying certain expenses that are in the declarations of conservation, easement, and related covenants and restrictions?
No motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. Is there any other business to come before the council? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion, do I have a second?
And second.
Have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion—motion carries, meeting adjourned.